The Town Center Ordinance also goes through a number of criteria for building facade, different articulations of the building, different materials on the building, all of which are being met and exceeded based on the criteria provided in the ordinance.
And all of which could be subject to discussion at the land development stage if folks have issues with certain articulation of the building elevation, materials, et cetera. And Mr. Dillon, we should probably mark that as 24.
I have 18. Color rendering 1132. Is that different than this?
That was more of a generic one. I think this exhibit represents the specific proposal of the applicant for this particular site.
Correct.
3D color rendering.
Yep.
That'll be Exhibit 25.
Okay.
So I don't see any further comment. Mr. Murphy, might it make sense for you to give us a memorandum in support of this?
I would be pleased to do so if that's the request.
We have a meeting on February 14th. I would suggest that if you could have us something to dissolve it by February 8th, I can have it distributed to the board in their packet on February 9th. And hopefully then be able to have a vote on this project on the 14th. Does that schedule make sense to you, Mr. Murphy?
That's fine.
Does that make sense to the board?
Yeah, I think that makes all the sense in the world.
So at this point... Well, that's all that's... Are we closing the hearing? I don't think we're...
Yes.
I don't see anyone else raising their hand or offering.
We do have one more. And Mrs. McCurdy was already sworn in earlier this evening.
Okay, so you said the business is going to be open. The businesses are going to be open.
Okay. Businesses are going to be open to the public. Correct, they're there, salons, whatever. If you have 58 parking spots for the residents and you're going to open businesses to the public, where's everybody else going to park?
Sure. So as part of the analysis that we did for zoning and parking, it is based on that retail space by square footage complying with the parking requirements of the ordinance. So the original conditional use plan we submitted showed 56 parking spaces. Through review from your township engineer, they made that determination that we want to make sure that the retail space is available for the public if and when that is the use. So we did add the additional parking spaces back. So that is incorporated into the current plan.
We have one more.
Yeah, I was sworn in already as well. So is there any question? Piggybacking off of Stephen Castle, what does the fire code say about fire trucks being in the collapse zone? Does it specifically speak to that? That's something that I think should be investigated because to your point, if our brave men and women are trying to save lives and their truck gets the building collapsed on, wouldn't that be a problem? The other thing, as it relates to the pump station and everything, assuming this project goes forward, they replace the force main, but the pump station, because to my point, we're kicking the bucket down the lane. The next project is going to have to do a study, review it, determine if there's a problem. Assuming that the next project doesn't happen and an issue happens and it's investigated and determined to be the cause of this project, the board should hold this project accountable in some way, some kind of professional verbiage in how you guys give authorization just to protect your residents that you guys are representing. That's all I have.
You Steve Ebersol has sworn in.
You will have to be sworn in, sir.
He was.
Were you sworn in?
At the first meeting, yes, I was. Just a... Stephen Ebersol. E.B.E.R.S.O.L.E. 648 Clearview Avenue, right in back of this development. This board is our property. What's that, is this permanent parking? Do the residents need permits? I mean, is this open to the whole general public? Can they park there? So what's going to keep people from other stores from coming in there and parking there too? Now, do the residents need to have a permit? Yeah, is there some kind of a...
We issue parking placards, you know, the little plastic, I'll call them placards, that hang from your rearview mirror. And we register all cars, all cars, all cars of residents that are parked on our parking lot to be registered with the management office, licensed and insured.
I'm just curious about what about the other businesses in the area, if people parking there?
We'll have staff on site and we'll be monitoring that on a regular basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, I suggest we make a motion to... At this point, I suggest we make a motion to close the hearing. Except for we have to reconvene to vote and...
Right, and I'll move all the additional exhibits that I offered this evening.
Exhibits are accepted. We'll close the hearing for further testimony.
Memo, do... If I choose to submit one by February 8th, 2024, decision by the board, 21424, if that's the...
That's the plan.
Plan.
And we'll review the exhibits and make sure we have them in order.
Correct.
All right. Do we have a motion as stated by Mr. Dillon?
They'll move.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Ottinger, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one question. We have 45 days to render a decision. Should it be noted that if we are not able to get together and discuss this in that timeframe, are we bound by that February 14th, Valentine's Day? I'm sorry, on meeting?
You're bound by 45 days.
Okay.
We're closing the hearing today.
So if we can't get it done by the 14th, it...
Mr. Murphy will be...
So it would not be...
Grant a reasonable extension if needed.
Yes, and if you guys aren't going to be on the 14th, I would appreciate Mr. Dillon telling me so I don't have to rush if I choose to do a memorandum. Well, I don't have to rush.
So it's agreed upon then if for some reason the board can't meet the 45-day deadline that the applicant will waive for additional...
Yeah, we'll meet the 45 days, but the next meeting is about 20 days from now and we may not make that 20-day meeting, but we should be able to.
Let's just, we'll clear it up right now. If necessary, Mr. Murphy will grant us an extension to February 28th.
Sure.
All right. Very good then. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on to line item three. Line item three has been tabled for this evening. We'll allow a minute or two to go by. All righty. Continuing on, line item three has been tabled for this evening, so we will move on to line item four. Consider approval of payment number three to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of $39,571.90 for the 2023 road improvement program. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is a request for the final payment for the road program. Final payment number three to Glasgow for $39,571.90.
All right. Thank you very much. So the motion would read to approve payment number three to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of $39,571.90 for the 2023 road improvement program and authorize the township manager to sign documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Thank you, Mr. Castle, for a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number five. Consider authorizing township engineer to provide bid specs for the Dolphin Activity Center walls. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you again, Board Chair. We are proposing a not-to-exceed contract amount for $10,000 to prepare contract documents for three walls and accessory structures, including windows, doors, insulation for the community building at Dolphin Park. That will take the project through the bidding process and award of the contract if it comes to be.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read to authorize the township engineer to prepare bid specs for the Dolphin Activity Center walls for a cost not to exceed $10,000. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Ottinger, sir.
Is this for the new building or the existing round building?
The existing round building. There's three sides that are open now and the township wants to make it a more usable building throughout the year.
So this $10,000 is just for you to do your survey?
No, this is to prepare contract documents to go out to bid, take it through the bidding process and present it to you with a cost from the contractor.
And do we have a rough cost amount of how much this is going to be to get done?
We've had a bunch of different estimates. This is the project that we had to go back and forth with buying the materials. So it was over the bid specs. So we had to have John draw up the specs.
It's more with the materials and the labor. The cost is over the required amount to go out to bid. We received a handful of proposals from different contractors. It's roughly not prevailing wage, it's $30,000. But with prevailing wage, it will be more than that.
So the total cost for this project is going to be in excess of $30,000 plus the $10,000 that you're talking about now?
That's correct.
And what do you currently use the new building for?
So the new building is going to be used for the snack stand. We'll have it for summer camps. We can have some meetings in there and some programming as well.
And the building that you're trying to refurbish?
That will be for, again, summer camps and for additional programming. It's a bigger area. We could do more fitness programs, things like that in that area.
You want to make, you basically want to make it out to be a 10-month building instead of just a three-month building. So that's the goal that we're trying to achieve. Also, John, as far as, does that include any type of mechanical type of drawings or anything? Just in case, like for some heating and...
It's only for the walls.
So if it needed heating or light or any type of air conditioning in there, is that something that you can rework on just in case with regard to that facility?
Yes. We talked about trying to get proposals for HVAC and to see if that falls underneath the bidding thresholds for the HVAC and the air conditioning.
Did we feel that it would or what?
We have not received any proposals yet.
Again, you can't piecemeal the project.
It's different trades. So if we went out to bid, it would be a different contract.
Okay.
I just want to have some understanding here. 2007, 2008, I was actually on the Parks and Rec Committee. Familiar with the site pretty much. And I haven't been involved in it in quite some time. So have we envisioned an overall plan yet of what we want to do there at the Dolphin?
So that would be kind of involved in the next, a grant writer and a comprehensive plan is something that I would love to do and John and I have talked about it multiple times. How to make that park more community-friendly and like a focal point for the township as far as recreation is concerned.
Why can't we do this project in stages instead of trying to do it under the envelope that you're proposing and doing the whole, going through the whole bid spec thing instead of just doing it either ourselves or doing it through subcontracting?
So there are bidding threshold requirements? Anything over 22... Okay, actually, it's one up this year. $23,200 needs to be publicly bid. And once you reach $25,000, it needs to be prevailing wage. To publicly bid, you need to actually advertise and have contract documents prepared.
So why aren't we doing three $10,000 projects?
Because that's piecemeal. You can't... You can't do it in stages to avoid the bidding requirements.
Sometimes government's inefficient. It's not efficient.
Believe me, I was on school board for nine years. I know how inefficient the process is.
What we're trying to do is kind of get some wins. We want to develop a global view for that particular site. I think what Walt's trying to do and what I'm trying to do and what the township's trying to do is try to get some wins. The pool's no longer there. We demolished the pool. We're working on that aspect, but we got to have some wins down there. We need some work on the pickleboard, the basketball, anything that we could do, whether it be a trail. We're trying to accomplish in a very quick manner. So we're trying to do both concurrently. We may have to develop the plan, but we're also trying to get some small wins for the township there.
And numerous things down there have been done by Public Works. And we didn't have to bid them, but this one exceeds the threshold.
So in the explanation of HVAC, is that going to be on top of $30,000, you envision? So you're doing this project and then we're going to consider an environmental project on top of it?
So the walls, the proposals were specifically just for the walls and doors and the accessory structures that would go with that. The HVAC would be on top of that.
So is there going to be an interior finish?
That'll be worked out in the contract specifications that we...
That you develop.
Yeah.
But at that time, it's going to be a functioning building?
That's correct. Without HVAC unless the board wants to...
Right, right. But it will have electric and...
It has electric now.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you're going to be upgrading some of it.
Well, right now, we're just, I mean, it's... The Public Works has been working on that building over the last few years.
Yeah.
So...
What I'm trying to get at here is, you know, I'm kind of used to a different process, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to say, okay, let's spend this $10,000. Let's have these bid specs. And then, okay, this is $30,000 in this phase and we need to spend $15,000 in this phase and we're going to spend $20,000 in this phase. I mean, I'm just having trouble understanding, you know, globally what we're going to accomplish here. I'm not saying, it's not a project I would support. I'm just used to having, you know, we don't even have a, you know, a drawing or rendering to reference here.
So six months ago, the architect prepared a proposal to do the walls. Their proposal came in at $18,000. And it was an architect that's done work in the township before. I think they worked on the library. That would be probably the more appropriate way to go if you wanted to include HVAC. I'm, you know, I'm engineer. I'm civil engineer. I'm not a structural design engineer. These aren't structural walls. But, you know, if that's the avenue that the board would like to entertain, if they want to be all-encompassing and get a price for everything that wants to be done with that building at once, I think that might be the more appropriate avenue.
I would expect, you know, that, you know, as proposing $10,000, the maximum $10,000 for design specs that we get a complete rendering of it. We can always pull parts of the project out, you know, and put them in. That's just my opinion, you know. I'd like to know what the, you know, the finished plan is before I decide I'm going to start a project. It's just not the way that I'm used to, you know, doing stuff. But I'm new. I haven't been with the further discussion, so...
Would the board like to table this line item then for further discussion?
Well, as it is now, I'm a no. So if I give you a no, you better... I would say we go back to the drawing board. Since I've been on a board, we've talked about trails. We've talked about grants for this place. The pool's been demolished. I think that the place is, we need a comprehensive plan in front of us to make this work appropriately. I don't think it's a nickel-and-dime job. You know, I asked about if the LSAA wanted to put a football field in. That was a no. You know, before we put any more money into the Dolphin Swim Club, which was a flop, I think we should, you know, get a plan together and then move forward from the plan. I don't think that we should be doing one thing here and then down the road do another thing. That's just my opinion.
All right. Well, if the board has no issues, I think we should table this for further discussion then. All right. All right. Moving on to line item number six. Consider authorizing Parks and Rec's director to hire a grant writer. Mr. Mulholland, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. So this kind of tied in with it, I guess, depending on how you guys feel with this. The grant writer was, is to help us propose a plan for Dolphin Park. And this is D.C. and our Department of Conservation and Natural Resources have an annual grant period that just opened up. And so to better enable us to have a chance to win the grants, to work with CKS or a grant writer to help us to get the grant.
I'll make the motion. Okay. So we need to set a dollar, let's be honest. I have all that here. So the motion would read to authorize the Parks and Rec's director to hire, I believe the gentleman's name is George D. Passario from CKS Engineering, to, as a grant writer, for the amount of, for the amount not to exceed $3,000. Is that correct? All right. So we have a motion made by Mr. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second made by Mr. Castle. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number seven. Consider authorizing the Parks and Rec's director to solicit corporate sponsorship. Mr. Mulholland, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. In order to bring more attention and revenue to the Parks and Recreation Department, I was looking for a blessing from the board to be able to solicit corporate sponsorships for our events and programming.
Thank you, Mr. Mulholland. So the motion would read to authorize the Parks and Rec's director to solicit corporate sponsorship for programming. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Any discussion?
Just a question. Is this something that Mr. Dillon is going to have to review these agreements?
Well, Walt sends me stuff. Walt sends me stuff all the time. We discussed this and I suggested you get your authority before this happens. So this will be the first step in the process and we'll work through it.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number eight. Consider adoption of resolution 2024-7 Silver Planning Module for 504 East Bristol Subdivision. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is for the single-family lot that's been subdivided into two lots. The existing house already has a connection. This is for the new house to be connected to the township sewer.
Got you. All right. Very well then. So the motion would read to adopt resolution 2024-7 Silver Planning Module for 504 Bristol Road Subdivision. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number nine. Consider appointment to the library board for a two-year term. This was something that was in front of us not that long ago where we had postponed it. So as of right now, I would like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Nicholas Matt to the library board for a two-year term ending in January of 2026. We have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, for the second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas Matt. If you are watching, we appreciate your effort and time that you will be putting into the library board. And line item 10, personnel. Mr. Gouda, I don't believe we actually have any personnel for tonight. I believe that was also tabled. So at this point, we will move to manager's report. Mr. Gouda, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Just gone over a couple items. Township cleanup day is Saturday, April 20th. That starts at 9:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. Walt will be looking for some volunteers for that particular day. Lower South Fire Department is having a raffle ticket sale for the month of March. These tickets allow 31 chances to win. The tickets are $10 each. Daily prize is $50. each. Daily prize is $50. On March 17th and the 31st, the prize is $200. Lastly, sanitation rebates that runs from the 8th through the 31st of May, February 8th through the 31st of May. Again, you have to be a Lower South resident, senior citizen, 65 years or older, a veteran who's 50 or 55, over 50% disabled. You must be the homeowner for the entire year of 2023. Has to be a primary residence, and you have to be 65 years old by 12/31/23. So there's some criteria to it. And lastly, the tax bill had to be paid and filled by 12/31/23. That's all I have, Board Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gouda. Moving on to supervisor's comments. Mrs. Cummings?
I wanted to thank Rich and his crew for all the snow removal. The town, the roads looked great. They were cleaned efficiently. It was really good. Saw Bob out there in the truck in the neighborhood, and so it was a nice job. You guys, you guys do a lot, and you're working through the night. Always want to remind everybody to check out the website for Parks and Rec. It's springtime coming up, and the, spring and summer, so please check those out. Lots of events going on for all ages and for, for lots of people for different things in the community. So Walt's done a great job with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. Mr. Ottinger, sir?
Last month, I was lucky enough to get the secretary job, and with that job, you get the $750 stipend. So I decided I was going to give back the stipend to the police department, the rescue squad, and both the fire departments equally. So I, I guess I had to put that on the record.
Kudos to you, Mr. Ottinger. Very, thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Very nice, Mr. Roger. All right. Mr. Perrotta, sir, your turn.
I want to thank all the residents that came out tonight to participate. I mean, without, you know, the citizens in government, government doesn't function well. So I appreciate you all coming out, voicing your opinion. I appreciate the people that volunteer for us. Someone that we put on the library board today, as I mentioned earlier, I served on the Parks and Rec Commission back in the day, trying to save the Dolphin Swim Club. We were successful for a while, but, you know, the, the area, you know, has, I assume had some things that couldn't be overcome without super major investment. But I appreciate all the work that Matt's been putting in trying to bring the place back. I don't want my concerns tonight to the public to think that I'm not interested in seeing the Dolphin property move forward, but, I'm sorry, Matt, Walt, I'm looking at your thing and I still called you Matt. You'll find out I do that a lot. But I do believe, and I think Mr. Ottinger's comments were correct, is, is we need to be more global and, and try and make sure that the money that we're investing now, because I was part of that era where we put $10,000 here, $30,000 there, $40,000 there, and it was all for naught. We need to look at it more globally and strategically and make sure it meets the needs, because the number one thing about the Dolphin Club is, is the majority of the kids that camp there, and we want to make sure that we provide a good experience for those kids, or generally most of them are kids in our community. So we want to make sure it does that. I just want to state to the public that I appreciate every citizen that comes up here and voices their concerns. I don't appreciate when, when people may have every right to do it, but they, you know, to unfoundedly attack some of our professionals is just, is just not right. I'll answer any question from any, any constituent at any, any time, but, you know, you know, our professionals do a good job, and when they don't, I'll be the first one to point them out and call them on the carpet. But I appreciate, you know, what our professionals do for us. They help us, help us guide our township manager to run this township the best it can be, and I'm proud to serve with the, the people in this board and, and support the people that we have, you know, running the day-to-day operations of our township. And as Mrs. Cummings mentioned, Rich, I got a lot of good feedback from some of my neighbors, how fast the streets were cleaned up, so we really appreciate that. And that's all I have. I'm looking forward to dinner, 10 o'clock, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Mr. Castle, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be much shorter. I'd like to thank all the residents for coming out. It was nice to see a crowd. We're here to serve. Not everyone's going to be happy, but you have chosen us to make the decisions for the community, and hopefully we'll take everything that is said tonight and put it to heart and apply the law and come out with the best decision that the residents deserve, and also the applicant. He deserves some due consideration. Again, Rich, the roads were, were wonderful. I had one complaint, and within two hours, I saw township trucks out. It was like, you know, the president was coming into town. So they did a great job. I am disappointed, though, with some of our businesses, up and down Street Road and Bustleton Pike failed to clear their sidewalks. There are people that do not own cars. They use public transportation, and they walk up and down the road. And, and I took a, a brief look, and it looked like maybe more than half of the people cleared the walks, but it only takes one multimillion-dollar business to reel in it for the rest of the people in our community. So hopefully, our zoning department will be on top of that. Cars need to be removed. There were four cars on my road, and when my roads were plowed, our trucks had to go around them, and it leaves a mess in the road, and it also jeopardizes the driver potentially, the plow driver potentially hitting the car. So that's terrible that our residents are not considerate. Hopefully, we could do better next week when there's a little dusting coming along. And, Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is February 14. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Castle. I don't know if any of our residents have seen the most recent Lower Southampton spirit, but in our spirit, we have an article in here in regards to the Treevose Horticultural Society celebrating 101 years. Now, one of our faithful residents that come to these meetings, Mr. Jim Cates, who's sitting out in the crowd tonight, I just want to put him up on a pedestal and thank you, sir, for everything that you do. You have yourself spread all over the place, and I'm just going to read a little article here, a little blurb from the paper. Mr. Jim Cates of Feasterville received a National Garden Club Award for vegetables for his small bumblebee-sized tomatoes at the Treevose Horticultural Society Flower Show. Mr. Cates, as always, you go above and beyond everything you do. You sit on multiple boards here in this township, and I just want to thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
The next flower show is August 18.
All right. Very good. Thank you. August. The next flower show, Mr. Cates said, will be August 18.
It's actually in that article.
Okay. All right. Well, very good then. And at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Aye.
All right. We have a, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, everyone.